Tim, Mark. Tim's got it. Ready when you are, sir. Call the meeting into order. Prayer, Vice President Reeves, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you on this day in humility and gratitude for your blessings upon those who reside in and govern our community. Please grant us wisdom, understanding, fortitude, knowledge, and the ability to find peace amongst one another, rather than fall victim to the will of evil men and women. We ask that you please pray for and protect our servicemen and women, police, firefighters, and sick and elderly. Also, please watch over those who have passed on. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance. Tim, roll call, please.
Councilor Goddard, here. Grove?
Here.
Patterson?
Here.
Vice President Reeves?
Here.
Tattasur?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Reeves?
Here.
President Stewart?
Here. I do appreciate everybody's patience. I apologize for getting started a little bit later this evening. We did hold an executive session prior to the start of the public meeting. The following issues were discussed at executive session. Michael Bloom, who is with the Farm of Bressman and Doyle, had provided us an update on the litigation that's associated with the new firehouse. We also received from Solicitor Duffy, an update on the litigation that we've got ongoing with the Eddie Stone Boys Club. And last, we had a very quick update regarding the litigation associated with William Connor. Vice President Reeves, if you can introduce our superintendent of schools?
Yes. District of Distinction is a national-recognized program created by District Administration Magazine to honor school districts that are leading the way with new ideas. In March of 2015, Ridley School District was honored as a District of Distinction for its digital learning platform. Here with us this evening is our superintendent, Ms. Leanne Wenzel, to explain the digital learning platform that helped earn Ridley this prestigious accolade.
I first want to thank council for the invitation to speak with you this evening, and especially when we have students that will be making presentations as well. The digital learning platform, we implemented in conjunction with the iPad initiative, the one-to-one initiative, in the district from kindergarten all the way through the senior class. But it's not about the device, it's what you do with this tool that's important. And I have to commend our teachers, because the efforts that they have gone through to really bring this device to the level at which we are now has been amazing, and is evident by the fact that we've been nationally recognized now with all the hard work that they've done. It provides the students the opportunities to work in school, at home, in the McDonald's, really on schoolwork, and making the device a personal learning tool. And that's our ultimate goal, that we work on personalizing learning to meet the individual needs of the students. So, as we've moved through this process, we really are now able that we can instruct students in class, we can instruct students in the home, and we refer to it as a hybrid approach, that it gives us the opportunity to really blend those worlds. So, we really look to continue to develop these techniques and skills, but it's the hard work of the teachers that I have to thank, because without them, we would not be where we are today. Thank you, too. Anybody have any questions?
I understand there's a Title I school. Is there a way parents can get reduced rate per Wi-Fi through a specific provider?
So, I actually looked at this before I came down to make sure I was correct in terms of the rates. RCN has three different rates. Verizon has two different rates. However, right now, the school district actually partners with Comcast in what they call the Comcast Essentials Program, which enables families that qualify, and it's usually through the free and reduced qualifications, to get Wi-Fi access for $9.95 a month. So, we can help in that process, really, if you log on to Comcast's website, or even contact our food service director, they can send you the information, but you do your application, you can do it on the iPad, on your child's iPad at home, and log in to apply for that information. But we really felt that that was a great partnership with Comcast. We were one of the initial school districts that rolled that out, so that we could be partners with them to try and provide that to as many students as possible.
As you know, Despo and I do the tutoring on Tuesdays. Are there any particular apps that would benefit the students?
I would recommend always check with the experts.
Okay.
All right, because they're going to know what they like to use, and what really works for them. The district has a process for approving apps. Ninety-nine percent of all the apps approved are free. So, we've really done our homework. I think we've actually only approved, at this point in time, three paid apps, and they're for special needs children with autistic speech difficulties. But all the other apps are free. We don't recognize one app over another. Students have different needs, and that's the whole advantage that this device provides, that they can pick and choose what they like and what works best. We actually have started a field test in Eddie Stone and Woodland, utilizing a program called E-Spark, that we're going to expand this summer, that allows students to work with apps within what we're called Quests, so that as they achieve and move forward, the game changes with them. So, they're going to have access to that as well.
I wanted to add, too, I wanted to ask, do you think the tutoring program, we should purchase some iPads for our program, so that we can keep, you know, the kids?
You know, because we have the ability for the iPads to go home, I think it would be better to invest in some other areas of the technology, providing, you know, the Wi-Fi at Lighthouse Hall is ideal. You know, that's a better investment, because we can provide the device, and you don't need to purchase the apps, because many of them are free. But it allows us to be able to have the device in the child's hand 24/7, and that's our goal, that it really becomes a personalized learning device.
I was just wondering if any programs were in place, like reward programs, like KidBiz, where maybe the council would have an opportunity to recognize students?
So, right now, what we have in place, there aren't levels, because it's personalized achievement, so many of you might have remembered the Hundred Book Challenge. One of the issues we have sometimes with those reward programs is it lowers some intrinsic motivation, and we're only doing it for the new medal or the new ribbon. So, we're looking at ways in which we can track some of these changes, because students are all moving at their own level. So, it could be like the number of levels that you move that we can recognize. We're trying to look at the data to see what would be the appropriate way to incentivize students.
So, do we have KidBiz, or no? We don't have?
Not at the elementary level. We work a little bit with RAS kids, I'm trying to think, but E-Spark is the new one, that we really have been seeing some great gains. We actually piloted in first grade at Grace Park, and saw an 80% change, and we're doing it as a real pilot. We've actually gone, we saw such good gains in the first trimester at Grace Park, we went to a field test for Woodland and Eddie Stone in third grade. So, we're looking forward to see how, seeing how that moves forward, and we think that that's probably going to be the easiest place where we can track.
Any other questions?
Before you sit down, on behalf of Eddie Stoneborough Council, Mayor Reeves, we would like to say thank you for all your hard work and effort in making our school district a District of Distinction.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Councilwoman Tattasur, where did April, March go?
Around the corner.
It's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone. And it's been a longstanding tradition here in the borough of Eddie Stone, that we recognize Women's History Month, which is the month of March, with an essay contest for our fourth graders, and at this time, I'll yield to you to introduce the winners of the essay contest, as well as Principal Durazio.
Thank you to Principal Durazio, Ms. Leanne Wenzel. And the kids who write their essays, because this is my favorite meeting of the year, and I'm so happy to present our two winners this year. Cynthia Land, and she's going to be our first recipient tonight. Come on up, Cynthia, read your essay.
The best person in the world is my mom. We come together like cookies and milk. She does lots of fun things. She's the best, because she's a great cook, she is the funniest, and she's lovely. Is your mom a good cook? Well, my mom's cooking is a bang. When she cooks gronkeys, yeah, she puts lots of sauce on them, and it tastes amazing. Also, she's the best. When you come downstairs, it's like you're at a restaurant. When she cooks chicken, she makes it crispy and crunchy, it's like a juicy crunchy apple. How funny is your mother? When my mother goes shopping, she says, "I have no money again," one thing, she comes out with a whole cart of food. Her dancing's great, too. When my mom's favorite song comes on, she dances crazy, and she is a whisper in the door. My mom is loving. When she sees my grades, she knows I'm having trouble, so she buys me things to help me get better. I think my mom is the best ever, because she cleans my room at school, so I can save my room. My mom's the best cook. She's funny and loving. My mom is my hero. If I did not have my mom, I wouldn't know what to do. I love my mom and all of you.
That was beautiful, and you are very lucky to have a beautiful, lovely mom. And this is for you, for doing such a wonderful job with your essay, from council and Mayor Reeves, and... Thank you, Cynthia. That was beautiful. I'm coming over for that chicken.
Cynthia, one question, what are galumphies?
You don't know?
Is it the?
The K-burger, right, the cabbages?
And cabbage, cabbage rolls?
Yeah.
Thank you. What do you call them, Greek?
Tomatoes.
Tomatoes?
Okay, our second recipient tonight is Patrick Wise.
It is a Friday night at my house, and my mom is making her spaghetti. My mom is the best cook. She is my favorite in the family. She is the most important woman in my life. My mom cooks delicious meals. My favorite is spaghetti and meatballs. She cooks it differently. It tastes like heaven. My mom takes me to baseball and basketball. She also helps me by helping me practice. The best part about it is that I get to spend time with my mom. She likes to support my team. She supports my team by donating money to my team. My team uses the money to buy uniforms for the players on the team. Is your mom like this? If she is, you are a lucky kid, because a mom like this is special and amazing.
Congratulations, Patrick. And I've known your mom since she was younger than you. And this is for your mom. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, teachers, again, Principal Durazio, and parents for supporting your kids. That was beautiful.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you having us. Thank you so much. I'd like to do one more presentation before we take a very short recess. Councilwoman Patterson, would you like to introduce the representative that we have from the Clean Air Council to join us this evening?
Yes, we have Thurman Brinlinger from the Clean Air Council with our program, the Young Lungs Play.
Thank you much. I won't take you very much of your time, but we did want to come and recognize Eddie Stoneborough for the great work and commitment that they've made to this program. It's called the Young Lungs Play Program. It's a Pennsylvania Department of Health program to promote healthy lungs for kids, and good role modeling for those kids, so that they don't start smoking, and to help folks that want to stop, they can do so and help their kids out and their families with that. So, it's a great program. There's a lot of great services out there for folks that want to quit smoking. Proser Keystone has a great program, Holcombe Behavioral Health, Riddle Memorial Hospital, and just some great programs, Chestpan as well. So, we encourage folks that do smoke to try to quit. I know it's a difficult thing to do. It's an addictive substance, and it takes a lot of tries sometimes. But there's free services out there, and we have cards, and we can leave those for folks who want to do that. But again, you're protecting your kids' lungs and their futures with this program. And we applaud Borough Council for adopting this program, and we have a certificate here from the Pennsylvania Department of Health in honor of their acceptance of the program and starting up here in spring. So, we thank you.
Call of council. Dallas, under the chair, there's a sign for Clean Lungs. Young Lungs Play.
Here's one there.
Perfect.
Here's this, and it would be great if any of you kids want to be in the picture, because it's all about you. Come on up. Come on up. This is a part of the future. I'll give this to you. That was a good try. Yeah, that's, yes, that'd be great, thanks. You folks have done all the work, and...
It's great you're tuned in.
Get one there first.
Thurman, come on in.
Okay.
We can go down in front, so we can see the people in the back.
Oh, me? Miss Paul's the kid.
Smile. One, two.
Too much flesh?
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thurman, before you go, I just wanted to, you know, number one, thank you for your time and joining us here in front of Borough Council. It was actually probably almost a year ago, since baseball season's getting ready to start, that Hope Quinn, and we were up at the field, Don Marion Field, we had a lot of spectators that were around the baseball field, smoking cigarettes in the bleachers, and she asked the question, is there anything we can do to, you know, stop this activity and, you know, safeguard the well-being of our children? You know, so thanks to Hope Quinn for speaking up, and more importantly, thank you, Mr. Patterson, for taking the comments of Ms. Quinn and taking the action to make sure that this program becomes part of our community. We've got signs that everybody is going to see go up. I've been working with Gene Scott on making sure that they're installed outside of our playgrounds, making sure that they're installed on the outside of our building at Lighthouse Hall, making sure that they're installed on the fencing around the playgrounds. So, please cooperate with the program. It works only as well as if the parents and the family members that come out to see the children participate in their sporting events, read the sign, and make sure that they extinguish their smoking materials prior to entering the grounds. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. We'll take a... We're not doing 10 minutes. We're going to do, we're going to do five minutes, five minutes recess. Council, we'd like to welcome Kate Ferry. Kate is with KRF Environmental, and over the last, has it been four months, five months?
Yeah.
It was, we'll call it six months ago.
Yeah.
Six months ago, Kate approached Borough Council, had advised that the DEP has some grant money that's available. It's a 567 grant, which is a recycling technical assistance grant. Essentially, what that does is provides monies for a professional service, KRF Environmental, to assess the borough and identify areas where we can improve the recycling program. So, we started our recycling program January 1st, 2014, correct, Anna Paul? So, we are one year in. It seems from the discussions I have with our Public Works Superintendent, he's telling me that more and more residents are participating. We were fortunate enough to be awarded a DEP 902 grant for $256,000, and that's allowed us to purchase recycling carts, and we're in the process of also getting ready to purchase a new vehicle. So, if anybody takes the opportunity, if it's still daylight when we, it won't be daylight when we're done, but peek into the old firehouse, and you'll see all the recycling carts that are being prepared. Our highway department is hammering wheels on, like Santa's workshop. And we're getting these things ready as quickly as possible, so we can start distributing. But Kate is joining us this evening to present what I'll term the draft, final report. Kind of an opposite, but we do want to mark it draft just for legality purposes. Kate has submitted the report middle part of March. The DEP is a little backed up. They have not put the final stamp on, however, she has had a telephone conversation, and the folks at the Department of Environmental Protection are very comfortable with you presenting a draft report, so I will yield to you, and we appreciate you coming out to address council, as well as our citizens about recycling.
As Bill said, I'm Kate Ferry, and I, it's been a pleasure to work with Bill and with Eddie Stone to improve recycling. The technical assistance grant is what Bill said. It's technical assistance from a professional for the borough. It doesn't come with any money or, you know, goods, but it's recommendations. And so, I want to present the recommendations, and also make sure you know that these are recommendations. They're not anything you have to do, but I work with lots of different townships and boroughs, and see what works and what doesn't work, and so these are recommendations that you can discuss. So, the financial benefits of recycling, you've probably already gone through them, but just so that everyone knows, when you take a piece of material and you put it in the recycling instead of the trash, you don't have to pay that money to put it in the trash. Whenever you put something in the trash, you have to pay the tipping fee at the landfill. So, you save that money. Also, every year, the DEP gives grant money through the Section 904 grant, which is different than the 902 grant, and the more a borough recycles, the more money DEP gives you every year. So, there's a twofold financial benefit to recycling, as well as all the environmental benefits. So, what I looked at, I talked with Bill and members of the council to see what we could focus on. We focused on three things, which were Eddie Stone Elementary, and the businesses in Eddie Stone, and the residential program. So, I talked with Jeff Durazio about the elementary program, and the idea is that when you educate students, you educate families. So, I talked with Jeff to see where the school is right now. What do they do? And they don't do that much. They have a little, they have glass and plastic recycling out back. They don't do a whole lot. But I discussed with Bill and with Jeff about putting a paper recycling bin in the school, which Bill and Jeff were very instrumental in getting that moving. The paper retriever bin is a large dumpster that can go in back of the school. The students can use it, the community can use it, and the company that provides it gives money. It's a fundraising. So, you get to recycle, and the school gets money for each ton of paper and cardboard that's collected. And Jeff was very open to that. And so, in conjunction with bringing in recycling to the school more, and Earth Day coming up in April, we talked about also educating the students with, through worksheets and lesson plans, specifically about the recycling in Eddie Stone. Not just recycling in general, that it's good, and this is how it works, but these are the things we recycle in Eddie Stone, and this is how you can do it. There are four different lesson plans and worksheets that I included in the report that are available to change if you want. I've, you know, provided Word documents if you want to change them, PDFs if you just want to send them on, and a letter to teachers saying, you know, we are putting a lot of effort into the recycling program in Eddie Stone, and we'd love if you include these worksheets or lesson plans for Earth Day, or any time of the year. And it's up to the teachers to do that, but to provide the school with the opportunity. And that can be used any year. It could be used this year, which, you know, Principal Durazio was very open to. It could be used the next year, and the next year, and, you know, and you have the Word document, so if something changes, change it. And the worksheets are all different. They're, the students create an advertisement for their recycling bin out back, so the community comes, you know, to advertise their recycling, paper recycling bin, that raises money for the school. And that can be used to raise funds for, you know, technology in the classroom, or whatever the school chooses. The residential program, I took a look at what's going on right now in Eddie Stone, and I know that the recycling program was... and I know that the recycling program was started with a goal to have a 20% diversion, which is a great goal. And overall, I think the, the state tries to have every municipality reach 35% diversion. So, as, as the Eddie Stone program is starting, 20% is a great goal. It's manageable, it's definitely manageable, and, and I'm excited, you know, you're getting there. So, right now, we're not there yet. I think what I calculated was between, I think it was 6%, but maybe up to 8% is what the diversion rate is right now. So, there are three things you want in a residential program. You want motivation. Why, why do people wanna recycle? Education, how can they recycle? And enforcement. A good program has these three things and in equal, you know, in equal amounts. The main thing is education. And this is haulers and municipalities agree across the board. If you don't have education, if you have a great program but you don't have education, you don't really have anything, because nobody knows how to use it and nobody knows to use it. And right now, Eddie Stone is investing significant time and resources into making this a great recycling program. This is, you know, having curbside, single-stream recycling is the easiest. It's, you know, it is right now. It's a great program that has been started here. So, the suggestions I have for the residential program are just supplemental to this program. Because there's so much investment in, in this program, the carts are coming out, you wanna have a return on investment, because the more you recycle, the more money you get back, right? You're not paying for trash and you are getting money back from DEP. So, you want people to participate. One way, even though Eddie Stone is not a mandated municipality, you're not required to have an ordinance that says everyone must recycle, that's a very common thing to do when you start a recycling program, is to put an ordinance in place saying, we have a recycling program. Your, you know, residents and businesses are required to recycle. And that is pretty much across the board, a standard. There's a standard ordinance that goes in. And it's an easy thing to do to make sure that you have a return on your investment. Also, I calculated Eddie Stone's Section 904 grant, which is the money that you get every year from DEP. And if Eddie Stone reaches the 20% diversion rate, then you would be getting back over $10,000 from DEP per year, which is great. However, DEP does not let a municipality receive more than $10,000 if they do not have an ordinance in place. So, there are a few stipulations if a municipality wants to receive more than $10,000 in Section 904 grant money every year. One is that they have to have an ordinance in place that requires recycling for residents and businesses. They have to have some kind of enforcement program. They have to have someone designated as a recycling coordinator. And they have to have some kind of ongoing education. So, ongoing education means you have it on the website, maybe you send out a mailing or something. So, the main, the main requirement really is to have an ordinance. So, that's my main recommendation for the residential program. Also, checking cans. There's a lot of things that are illegal now. You're not allowed to put electronics in the trash. So, many municipalities are starting check programs. They call them SWEEPs, Solid Waste Education and Enforcement Program. S W E E P, sweep programs. And you check a can, make sure there's nothing in it. If there are electronics in it, that's illegal in Pennsylvania now. If there's recycling in the trash, you put a sticker on the can saying, hey, there's recycling in your trash, you know. If it's great, you say, hey, good job. So, that's the kind of thing a sweep program can do. The public works staff can take, you know, one day out of a month or something and just check cans and say, you know, who, what, like, that's pretty much education at the curbside. Very specific education, which in a number of townships have proven very effective to get rates, recycling rates up. And another thing is just the education, mailings and newsletters, both of which I have examples specific to Eddie Stone in the report to say, here there are recycling opportunities, not just, not just curbside, but where do you put your batteries or your light bulbs or your tires? Anything. So, I got, I took all of the opportunities for residents of Eddie Stone and put them in a list and have it in a mailing. And you can use it or you don't have to, but it's in there. Let's see. Also, the commercial program, which was the big one. There are so many businesses in Eddie Stone, which is great. And you can receive a lot of Section 904 revenue from business recycling. So, with so many businesses in Eddie Stone, again, an ordinance requiring businesses to recycle is going to bring in a lot more recycling. Every ton, no matter who recycles it, any ton of recycling in Eddie Stone counts toward the Section 904 grant. So, I took, I got a list of all the businesses in Eddie Stone. There were about 115, and called everybody to ask them a few questions. Do you recycle? And if you do, how do you recycle? And what do you find is the hardest thing? If you do or you don't, what's the hardest thing? What's the biggest impediment to recycling? And out of 115 businesses, I talked to about 43 who actually were willing to talk or had time or were there. About 21 of them did recycle some form of material. And I think three of them only recycled cardboard, which is standard for some businesses. Four of them, the employees said they recycled, but what they did was they took the recycling home and recycled it at their residence. So, you have about half, if that is indicative of the business community. There's about half of the businesses recycling. And so, to get the other half of the businesses that aren't recycling onboard would be, would just divert a huge amount of trash to the recycling. A lot of, I also asked what were the impediments? And a lot of the impediments to recycling were, well, I don't think I really have any recycling. Well, do you have paper at your business? Oh, well, yeah, I do. Another impediment was that, they said their hauler did not offer recycling collection. And that's something that if they don't know who collects recycling, they just say, I don't know who does it, I'm not gonna do it. So, there's education to businesses who collect recycling, and it just, you know, greases the wheels. And another impediment was cost. They said, well, you know, if the borough came to collect my recycling, I would recycle, no problem, if they gave me a can. So, that's something to think about as well. The, I think the ordinance is the biggest thing that would get businesses onboard. There's education and networking. There were a few businesses that said, I just wanna feel connected to the community. I want, I want the community to know that I'm here, that I'm a business in this borough. And, and there is merit to that, too. Feeling like you're part of a community just makes you wanna do things that benefit the community. So, something like a newsletter could have information on local businesses or highlight a business that does really well at recycling in the community. And that's, I'll explain in the report as well. A networking meeting just for Eddie Stone businesses was something that a few people mentioned they just wanted to, to know the other businesses and talk. So, to have, another recommendation is to get a business network meeting going, whether that's run by the borough or maybe just contact a prominent local businessman and, or woman and ask if they want to run the networking meeting. And then a newsletter for businesses, which, again, I have an example that's specific to Eddie Stone in the report that you can change and, or you can just use it if you want to. So, the, so that touches on the school education, getting the lesson plans in the classroom, putting the bin at the school. Then the residential program, putting an ordinance in place, having curbside education where you check cans to make sure that people know what they're doing, what there's, you know, what they can't do, what they can do. Also, mailings, like a newsletter or mailing with a tax bill, just a little sheet about how can you recycle in Eddie Stone. And then the commercial program, again, an ordinance, but education. Putting out a newsletter or a mailing and then a networking meeting to make them come together, feel like they're part of the community. And a forum for asking questions about, how do I recycle in Eddie Stone? Or, I wanna recycle, my neighbor wants to recycle, why don't we jointly contract a hauler and save money? That's the kind of thing that, that can happen at networking meetings as well. So, those were the, the three main things I touched on in the report. There are a number of appendices to use, to change. I sent the Word documents so they can be changed. And I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about anything else that...
Council, any questions for, for Kate?
I have a question. The, out of the 115 people you talked to, or the 40, whatever, and you said there were some that were very interested? So, list them, all those business people?
Yes. In here, I have all of the businesses that I contacted. Well, I left the names out of the report, but I can provide that to the borough. I didn't wanna put it in a public report.
Understood.
But, but I have all that, the information in the borough. Right in here, I have them just listed by number. And who's interested?
Okay.
And everything. There's a Excel sheet that's available.
And the rest of the businesses, they were just too busy? Did you send them, did you provide another call number or did you email them and...?
I didn't have emails. I was given a list, and each business had between one and four phone numbers. So, I tried the phone numbers that were given. A lot of them were not in service. I think maybe moving to cell phones, I'm not sure what. But I did contact 43 and knowing that out of 115, I wouldn't even get half. That's standard. But, but 43 was a good, I think that was a good representative number.
Did you contact the stores at the shopping center?
Mm-hmm. I did. I, yes, I did. A number of stores that were in one of the shopping center setting, which I think is there, the smaller businesses said, it would be nice to have recycling cans out front, like public recycling cans, so that our customers can use them, but we're not, you know. I think a lot of businesses say, if we have recycling in the store available to customers, sometimes they just throw trash in and we don't wanna be the ones to have to sort it out. So, that was one thing, that was an impediment to a few of the businesses, was I'm not gonna sort out when customers throw trash in my recycling bin. But they did say, well, if we have a public recycling can in front of all of the stores, then that, you know, collects a lot of recycling and it's not on us and maybe it would be, you know, a borough-collected can.
I was thinking more like Walmart, you know, a place that has lots of boxes.
Walmart does recycle.
They do?
Yeah.
Shoprite?
Most of the large grocery stores and businesses that have cardboard do recycle. And that's, a lot of that is reflected in, in the numbers that are already collected.
Yes, but just when she mentions the 904 grant, the 904 grant is the performance grant for recycling. Your national chain stores, Walmart, you know, Shoprite, they not only recycle, but they also fill out the paperwork necessary to submit it to both the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority as well as the borough. They were primarily the numbers that Tim used last year when we submitted the 904 grant. And Tim, how, how difficult was the 904 grant to fill out? It was a pretty short... So, you know, they're, they're two big stores that are, you know, they, they understand what the requirements are and they send the information along. I, I think the important thing here with the report that we're, we're gonna get from this Ferry is that, you know, we've gotta educate the hundred-plus small businesses that we have in Eddie Stone so that, you know, it's a very simple report to fill out. However, we need that documentation as a, as a borough to be able to pass that information along to the DEP, and you're gonna see a significant increase in what we're gonna get from a, from a recycling performance standpoint.
And many small businesses don't even have to fill out paperwork if they hire a company like Waste Management or Republic. Those companies report all of their commercial recycling directly to the county, so it's, it's even less of a burden on some small businesses. And some do internal recycling and they fill out the paperwork.
And when would you and Mr. Durazio be introduced to the students in the elementary school?
Well, we talked about the bin coming out around Earth Day. I'm not sure, I kinda left that up to them to figure out with the company, 'cause I don't need to be in the middle of that. So, we said around Earth Day, I'm not sure.
Mr. Durazio has said. The paper retriever bin, the program itself is actually operated out of Suburban Waste down on the Custer Highway. So, I've already connected Principal Durazio with the coordinator for paper recycling down at Suburban Waste. That delivery is set. I believe that it's gonna come out on Earth Day. So, you know, it's gonna be Mr. Durazio's responsibility at that point to make sure that the teaching, learning, the lessons, the lesson plans get distributed. And then, you know, they'll just have to carve off some time to be able to do the lesson plan, and then he can explain the purpose of the dumpster. Recycling bin, did I say dumpster? I didn't say trash, did I?
It's like a giant dumpster looking.
The recycling bin. And then, you know, from a, from a contractual standpoint, just to be clear, as the school is entering into the agreement with Suburban Waste and Paper Retriever, so that whatever monies are being generated as part of the fundraising, they're cutting that check directly to the school. Any questions from residents?
I have one question. How do you, how do you enforce it?
Enforce recycling?
Need the ordinance first.
Generally, if there's a problem with putting a lot of recycling in a trash can, it gets obvious, because recycling is so bulky a lot of times. And that's where, you know, having a, a little sticker when the collectors are coming around saying, hey, we found, you know, cardboard in your trash, please put that in the, in the recycling. And that's generally how it's done, unless there's some egregious violation where, you know, maybe a neighbor would report it, but that generally doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, before you could enforce anything, you would have to have an ordinance, right?
Yes.
And that's, that's something that council is gonna have to decide whether that's appropriate or not.
Correct.
And then the wording of the ordinance would determine who was subject to it, so...
If there's a monetary fine or not recycling.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm assuming that if there was an ordinance, that if, if individual residents were subject to that ordinance, that businesses in the borough would also be subject to that ordinance. I hope that's the case. I hope they don't get a pass on that.
Well, that's the, that's the key, is, is that, you know, what Ms. Ferry has presented with her, with her draft final report is, is that the borough needs to make a decision. If we wanna receive more than $10,000 a year in 904 grant, then we need to have an ordinance on the books that mandates recycling. Right now, we're a voluntary program. So, you know, there's no recycling police that's going around peeking at everybody's trash can because we're voluntary. When we, when we roll the carts out, what we're hoping to see is, we're hoping to see a significant increase in participation, kind of leading the horse to water type of theory, that if you have the cart, there's no reason why you can't... that if you have the cart, there's no reason why you can't start throwing your cereal boxes and your tin cans in the, in the recycling cart. So, you know, once those numbers start to see and we see the spike, you know, at that point in time, you know, I, I think that it's prudent on Borough Council's hat position to, to actually say, okay, we're moving forward. We're going to create an ordinance to mandate recycling and then in turn, that's going to require the businesses to cut the line. Tim, just out of curiosity, and I won't hold you to the exact dollar value, but we did submit a 904 grant last year. Do you remember in the ballpark how much it was for?
I thought around $6,000.
$6,000.
And then our annual report was submitted this year, which forms the basis of that. That comes in like September.
Okay.
And I think we were higher numbers, but I don't know which adjusted.
Right.
But we're not at the ten thousand.
But Kate, based on your experience with other municipalities, other cities, you know, what we generate, it's been fairly consistent. We're around 1,100, 1,200 tons per year. The, the numbers that I hear when I make phone calls to our neighbors, the 20% is easy peasy.
Yeah.
The, the state would like to see us around 35%, but, but I sometimes get stopped on the street and they're saying, I can't believe I got 75% of my trash. You know, you're, you're a prime example of the amount of recycling material that you are producing on a weekly basis compared to, did you go to the, to the, to the small kitchen trash bag yet? Are you down to one of them bathroom bags with your municipal soundings?
Yeah, the 20% is, I mean, since this is, this program just started out, it's very typical that it wouldn't reach 20% the first year. But with a program like this where it's single-stream curbside, you're going to see 20% easily. And with the amount of business recycling that there is now, even if that remains static, it will be easy to reach that 20% and exceed $10,000.
In your experience, I know you say $10,000 general, but what is the most municipality borough town receives?
Well, I mean, for a, a bigger township, they get hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think probably the biggest that I've worked with is $85,000 a year.
What's this area, Delaware County, is any...
Springfield, Haverford, they get, yeah, Haverford would probably get around 85. Springfield probably more than that, maybe around 100,000. Yeah, a lot of it really hinges on residential. You can have a lot of commercial recycling, but if you have a lot of residential, that's where your numbers increase exponentially because they take into account your residential recycling rate. And when you calculate that, that's the multiplier for a lot of your grant money. So, if you have a ton of commercial and no residential, you're, you're not going to get very much. If you have a ton of residential and not that much commercial, you're going to get a lot. So it really behooves you to focus on increasing, increasing residential while you're increasing commercial. Otherwise, you don't get the benefit.
Ms. Wilson?
I think there's one other factor that is unusual in Eddystone, and that is that we have free pickup for our trash in Eddystone. And there are very few places that you can live around here that you don't have to pay for your trash pickup individually. And I don't think it's inappropriate for us to require something of people when you're giving them free service that they take care of. One of the factors that makes it expensive for the town to deal with the trash, if they're getting their trash pickup for free, we certainly could require something of residents that don't have to pay for their trash pickup.
Any other questions? Kate, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for all of your efforts. I, I know that it's been many, many weeks that you've been putting this report together. The one question I have to you is, is once we get a stamped copy that's been approved by the DEP, if we exhausted all of the funds that we have associated with this, or is there any type of follow-up? Or I'm sure you'll take a free phone call from me to stand to work.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that is the, the report is the end of the technical assistance grant. But at least I know I always follow up. And it's been a pleasure working with Eddystone because you have so much energy behind this program. So I'm happy to answer questions. I worked with Morton and, you know, I still am working, you know, I still get calls from them and, and help them think of the next, the next thing they can do. And so I'm happy to do that because I, I love what I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Counsel, I'm hoping to get a final report from Kate here in the next couple of days. You know, once that report is received, I'll forward it to everybody via email. But we've kind of got some things in concert happening here is, is that there's a lot of recommendations that Kate's going to make in the report that actually can be implemented as part of the 902 implementation grant. And, and one of the ideas that I've been kicking around is, is that her lesson plan actually has the students creating an advertisement. And, you know, there's nothing that would stop us from taking those advertisements once they're created, putting it into some type of publication, maybe even a community calendar, to where we would be able to distribute the calendars out to the community with, with the work that the children have done to encourage the recycling program. So, and, and Mr. Wilson, I, I appreciate the, the comment about the ordinance. We're getting pretty good with ordinances. We've got Mr. Duffy getting this thing down. If, if that's something that counsel wants to pursue in the next month or two, certainly we can craft an ordinance. I think you actually may have some sample ordinances in the report, correct?
I don't, I can provide them. I've written a number of them. So there's a standard one that DEP put out.
All right, with no other questions, let me just go through some previous item updates before we get to the public forum. Mr. Barnes and Mr. Wilson, I do appreciate all your patiencees. We do have a pretty long agenda. It's the 902 grant, which is the implementation grant. The carts are here. They are actually being housed in our old firehouse in the bays. Gene Scott and, and the highway crew are taking the time to install the axles on the wheels. So it's a lot of hammering away to get these things prepared. But what we're shooting at is to begin distribution here. We want to try to coincide everything with Earth Day. So hopefully next week, we can get some, some carts out the door. What we're doing, just so that the residents understand, is, is when you get the cart, it will actually have your street address and street name on it and you'll see a hot stamped serial number. We're working with our tax collector and making sure that we have all of the residential houses accounted for, creating a database and assigning that serial number to an individual house with a sticker. So in the days that we have windy days that blow the cans around, you can identify your can based on the sticker. And if the sticker gets destroyed, we can always go back to the embossed stamp. Mr. Donahue, no movement on the collective party agreement. It's in the hands of counsel, legal counsel, that is, with a C-O-N-S-E-L. COU-N-S-L, Temple University. So the attorneys are taking a look at the agreement. What it boils down to is it boils down to the two ordinances that are on the books right now that deal with the killed and service benefits and the survivor benefits. And, and the FOP is looking for us to make some revisions to those before they consolidate this thing down. So we've got a meeting, the next police committee meeting is scheduled for the 3rd of June. And I do appreciate your continued patience as we try to move this thing forward. Mr. Patterson, have you opened up the wood shop yet to repair the headers on the town clock?
I started the scraping.
Started the scraping?
Yes.
Perfect. And if anybody from the firehouse is here, just waiting for some photos so that we can get the old fire truck up on the website or on the meetusofit.com website so that we can put it up for sale. Any other questions from counsel about the previous agenda items? Mr. Barnes, once again, I do appreciate all of your patience, public forum.
More trash dog. I have your three words, well, not words, unfit dwellings.
Yes.
I'd like to have them signed. And the cop has given it back to me. I've complained about this stuff several times. Complained to Dallas, Dallas has came out a couple of times. But the last conversation I had with him, he said he can't do anything about this because he's not getting paid every time. To me, that's a slap in the face. I'm a taxpayer in this town. I have a right to live in a decent town. So without staying here and running through a lot of nonsense, I'd like to have these signed by Dave. The copy's made and give them back to me and give me a time period when these can be taken care of.
What do you, what are you looking for a signature? Do you have a, is it a complaint form that you fill out?
Two of them, the addresses aren't legible on the buildings.
Okay. Yard filled with trash. Yard filled with trash. And then a grease container on the side of them. Okay. Let me share these with Dallas.
Sure.
I'll put a signature on the fact that we've received them and I'll deliver them to you tomorrow.
That's fine.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm, I'm going to be kind of circumspect in what I'm going to say. It's a negative thing and, but I want people to be aware of some stuff. And...
What's your address, Mr. Wilson?
My address is the 1251 Easty Leffler Street, Eddystone. And since we're following the formal procedure here of coming to the podium and giving an address, I hope if any other comments are to be made, they will also be made in that manner rather than the address. Well, I wanted, I wanted to say that I, there are certain things about the town that I, I work on. And they are mostly things that have to do with things being out in the open, open government and things. I, I serve as the judge of elections in the northern ward, which is basically north of 10th Street. And the south ward is south of 10th Street. And, you know, I've been called many things, one of them being a pot stirrer. And that's not the worst thing I've been called. But when I see something, I try to help out with it. One of the things that we have had in, in the town is that we have not had our polls fully staffed. And we have worked, and I guess I'm saying primarily, my wife and I have worked to try to find people to work at the polls. And it's not that easy to do because it's a long, boring day. And there's a lot of hassles that can take place. But we've tried to recruit people for positions that were open and try to get people involved. Part of the reason for doing that is that you need to have people that start at the bottom and learn the election process and get to the point where if somebody retires, like, like Jackie retired, there's somebody else who will come in and has some experience that will take over that position. Because you can't just take somebody and put them in the top end because there's a lot of things to know. And it took me a while to get familiar. So that's kind of my background on, on this. I wanted to make an announcement. One is that the last time there was a big election that was heavily contested, there were a lot of write-in candidates. And I sent out a letter at that time to all the candidates, the parties, and the election bureau, laying out the ground rules for how you do an election with write-in candidates. And among those things are the fact that you can't have any electioneering in the polling place. You can't have people handing out stamps in the polling place.
Mr. Wilson, I'm giving you some latitude.
Yeah.
But however, you know, the purpose of the meeting this evening is to deal with borough business.
Right.
It is not Borough Council that controls how an election process goes. There is a Bureau of Elections, Bureau of Elections in the courthouse. And, and some of the things that you're saying is more appropriately addressed with them as opposed to being addressed in this forum. So, so I'm, I'm giving you some latitude, but if we can, if we're going to continue to go down the election process, I, I'll cut you off and ask you to, to raise these concerns with the Bureau of Elections, not with Borough Council.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say is that we are facing write-in candidates this time and that same letter is going to go out to everybody. So that the, before the write-ins were all Republican this time, the write-ins are probably all going to be Democratic, but they're going to get the same letter. One thing I would like to do is ask the community for people to volunteer to work at the polls. You can get in touch with the Election Bureau and media or anyone else who's an election worker.
You're on the tightrope. I'm just cautioning you.
All right. I'll say this briefly and then I'll vacate the podium. One of our election workers was put under pressure and harassment to resign. This was communicated to the Board of Elections, who took a very dim view of it. That person has subsequently felt it necessary to resign that position.
And Mr. Wilson, I'm going to ask you to have this discussion with the Delaware County Bureau of Elections.
Well, I just want the community to know...
And I've given you the latitude to get it off your chest and, and I need to, to stop the conversation there, that, you know, I understand your concerns. I appreciate you bringing it to a public forum here this evening. You know, however, it's, it's not the purpose of what this council table is here for tonight. And I just ask you to, you know, take those concerns. You're, you're a judge of elections. You understand how the election process works and take those concerns to the Bureau of Elections.
Well, I just would ask that all the political people in this town try to behave in a correct manner and not do this stuff because this is going to not reflect well on the town because there are going to be overseers in the election.
And Mr. Wilson, I appreciate the comments. Any other public forum, yes?
You want to sign?
Sure, no problem. You can sign in, come right to the podium.
Thank you. Route 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 30th Street. Are we paying two chiefs salary?
No, sir.
Did we have a workman's comp case overturned? Yes, sir.
Did we have a workman's comp case overturned? I believe and I will, Mr. Duffy, with being the solicitor, I'm gonna try to answer the question the best I can.
So just now.
If I go too far, please stop me. I've been made aware from our Labor Council that there was an appeal to the workman's compensation case and the rulings that were circulated by Judge Sarah Makin, some of her rulings were affirmed and part of her ruling was overturned.
So are we paying two cheese or...?
No.
Not paying back money or anything?
No.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Any other public forum? Mr. Precente, can I have the treasurer's report, please?
Mr. President, the general fund balance of Beneficial Bank ending March 31st, the sum is $206,53. The fund balance in Sharon Bank ending March 31st, 2015, was $618,289. The balance of the general fund in Easton Borough, that was affected February 9th, 2015, is $324,342.
Counsel, you've heard the treasurer's report for the month of March 2015. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So are, Mr. President.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, cash receipts and dispersals general.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that cash receipts and dispersals general, all bills be paid and all deposits deposited.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Waters, can you present the... No?
I'll present it, Mr. Waters was called out of the fire company.
Okay.
He was present here today, but he is...
Mr. Precente, on behalf of Mr. Waters, can you present the code enforcement report?
Yes, Mr. President, month of March, codes issued, pardon me, performed 19 inspections, issued 34 work stop orders, violations or citations, issued 21 new work permits, 28 licenses, and received fees in amount of $23,000, $23,221 and 11 cents.
Counsel, you've heard the code enforcement report for the month, the month ending March 31st, 2015?
Make a motion to accept code enforcement report for the month of March, as read, made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Chief of Police Edward Macheski?
Yes, sir.
Can you please present the police report?
Police report for March 2015, 331 calls for the month, 1036 for the year, citations 92 for the month, 401 for the year, accidents 11 for the month, 24 for the year, deaths 21 for the month, 4 for the year, parking citations 40 for 99 for the year, and criminal arrests 41 for 90 for the year.
Counsel, any questions to Chief Macheski regarding the police report for the month of March 2015? No questions, may I have a motion to accept, please?
I make a motion to accept the police report for the month of March, as read, made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief Macheski, thank you very much. Representative from the Fire Department to present the fire report this evening? They had the emergency?
Yeah, President Allen Reeves III was here to make the report, but he responded same call.
Thank you, if you could present on his behalf, please?
In the month of March 2015, the fire company responded to 22 alarms, 11 by day, 11 at night. They had total members responding, 239, which averages out to 10.86 members per alarm. The total time in service was 16 hours and 35 minutes, and that report's under Andrew Walsh's fire chief.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of March 2015. May I have a motion to accept, please?
Make a motion to accept the fire report as read for the month of March, made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor Reeves, have you had an opportunity to sit with Chief Macheski to review his proposed work schedule for May 2015?
Yes, I have.
And could you make a recommendation to council for us to accept the work schedule of Chief Macheski?
Yes, I do.
You'll make that recommendation?
Yes, I will.
Counsel, you've heard the recommendation of Mayor Reeves to accept the work schedule of Chief Macheski for the month of May 2015. May I have a motion, please, to accept? Motion made by Councilwoman Patterson and seconded by Councilwoman Patterson to accept the work schedule for Chief Macheski for the month of May 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have that electronically yet, Chief? Can I pass to council?
I'll scan it.
If you can scan it, I'll just email it to the folks in council on this way here, you know when the chief is in the office, if there's any concerns, to give him a call. Mr. Precente, do we have the meeting minutes for March?
They're prepared, but cannot be tabled.
Sure. You can play a little bit.
No, it's really, I hope they're prepared.
I will table that until next month. At the request of Councilwoman Thompson, if you could circulate those a few days before the meeting, that way we can...
Yes, I gave them the workshop.
They were at the workshop.
Were they at the workshop?
If you haven't, just should be...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, any action needs to be taken this evening? Upcoming public meetings? Is there a question?
Ladies Auxiliary dates that we request to use the law?
You send me an email, didn't you?
I, yeah, you, Karen, I did. But she was gonna...
Could you share with me very quickly the dates that are...
Yeah, Ladies Auxiliary would like to request, May 8th and 9th will be our flower sale at the old firehouse out front. And Friday afternoon from 2:30 to 4:00, we'd just like to use the festival to sell flowers to the kids across the street. And then we're gonna do it Saturday on the field when the softball tournaments are going on. Just May 8th and 9th.
So that's May 8th and 9th at Lighthouse Hall?
Yes. July 18th, we'd like to have a senior luncheon and a bingo for, at Joe Hughes Hall for our seniors.
What was that date?
June 18th. November 14th, we'd like to have a coach and cash bingo at Joe Hughes Hall.
That's the handbags?
Yes.
June 14th?
It's gonna be cash and coach.
Oh, okay, November 14th?
Yes. And December 11th will be our Polar Express pizza party with Santa and Miss Claude at Joe Hughes Hall.
December 11th?
11th.
Your email that you sent me half the Times, Greg?
I'm sorry?
The email you sent me half the Times?
Um, no, I just sent you the tentative, but I can send you the Times.
This way we'll put them on the website?
Yep.
And if you can give me a little verbiage to just cut and paste?
No problem.
We'll add these to the community calendar?
Thank you.
Counsel, any other action?
Bill, the other thing is, we took a vote at Ladies Auxiliary and 50% of our proceeds from each of these are gonna be going to the fire truck fund and we're gonna keep a little, we're having a fire truck and then we'll color it in as we get up there.
Upcoming meetings, next Monday, the 20th at 6 o'clock, the Civil Service Commission will reconvene. The purpose of the meeting on the Civil Service Commission is to provide our findings of fact and conclusion of law. Many are aware, the 6th of April, the Civil Service Commission met as follow-up to the hearing for the discharge of William Connor as the Chief of Police. And the decision of the Civil Service Commission was to affirm or agree with the action that Borough Council took. And on the 20th, they'll actually be providing the written documentation of the reasons why they took such action. Mr. Patterson, 21st Tuesday at 7 o'clock?
Correct.
Meeting of the Recreation?
Correct.
And I can't believe we're into May already.
We're trying to be at 7 p.m.
Correct. We have, next council workshop meeting is Monday, the 4th. The next council meeting is going to be Monday, the 11th, and as Councilwoman Thompson pointed out, next Monday, what do we decide, 7 o'clock? Let me write it down first. 4:20 at 7 o'clock, there's a special meeting of Borough Council. It'll be an executive session. That executive session is to discuss the litigation with the firehouse. And Chief Macheski, you'll also be prepared with two part-time candidates so that Borough Council will have an opportunity to meet and interview the two candidates that you and the mayor are making a recommendation to be hired on a part-time basis. I think we talk the next 7:30 for the first? At 8 o'clock for the second. Yes, and that will be an executive session, so just to be clear, the doors will be closed. Councilwoman Patterson?
On May 19th, I'd like to see if Tim could put an ad in the paper to say that the rec board meeting will be moved over to Wednesday, the 20th, due to the elections.
Wednesday, May 20th?
Thank you.
Any other meetings that I'm missing? Councilwoman Gross, I put it on the agenda for you to give us a little bit of a history update, but would you mind doing roundtable if you would so prefer?
Sure.
And why don't I start with you?
Okay, then.
Councilwoman Gross, roundtable.
I'll do a little bit of history. In the year 1917, on Monday, April 10th, around 9:55 a.m. at the Eddie Stone Ammunition Company, one of three terrible explosions tore apart F Building where 380 girls and young women were working and loading shells with black powder. 132, mostly young girls, lost their lives and 52 of the dead were unable to be identified. On April 13th, at 11 a.m. at Chester Rural Cemetery, a mass and funeral services were held, an estimated 12,000 people attended the services. The ammunition company paid for all the expenses. The mystery of the explosions were never solved. At that time, they didn't know if it was carelessness on the workers' part or if it was sabotage by the Germans or the Russians. The United States had just entered World War I a few days before. Investigations later felt that the Russian Leon Trosky had the plant sabotaged to prevent the shells from reaching the new government set up by Hertzky, which was Democratic. Today, Chester Rural, there still remains a cross monument for all the people that lost their lives. Remember, the 100th anniversary will be up in a couple of years, on 1917, or 2017. And that was a little bit of history.
I'm glad you brought that up. I actually have had several conversations with Keith Lockhart. Keith, for those who do not know, Keith is actually a Delaware County historian and he is very interested in working with the Borough of Eddie Stone for planning some type of memorial service.
Absolutely.
The next year, it's actually next year on the 17th of April, is gonna be the 100th anniversary of the explosion.
The explosion happened April 10th?
April 10th.
1917 happened.
This'll be 2017?
Right.
About two years from now.
Two years.
Two years.
That's right, you're jumping the gun.
A little bit.
But absolutely, I agree, we should do something.
Sometimes it takes a while for us to get things done and this stuff.
I mean, they still have the cross monument with stuff written on it, but absolutely. And these were young girls, like 12, 13, small finger.
Anything else, Ms. Gross?
No, it's good, next month we'll have another little tidbit. Something cheerier. A little cheerier.
Councilwoman Dahlia?
Yes, I'd like to take this time to speak on something that has been brought up in meetings by our residents and recently has also been posted on social media such as Facebook about the Eddie Stone Rec. I reached out to Norm Quinn, Hope Quinn, along with Danielle and a few others to get a better understanding of the events that led up to their leaving Eddie Stone Rec. Hope Quinn indicated that she became more and more uncomfortable with the changes that were being made. On one or more occasions, she cried. And she had brought these feelings and concerns to President of Council many times. On one occasion, at a meeting to discuss coaching issues, the vice president of Council barged in and began screaming at Hope in front of many others, accusing Hope of taking, talking bad about her and telling her she better stop. Hope not only was embarrassed, but felt very uncomfortable at the meeting because of the hostility. Hope has been a volunteer and coach for over 10 years. She does it because of her kids and the other kids in the community. Unfortunately, the enjoyment she got from it was being taken away by the new chair of Rec. She knew that her, Norm, and Danielle spent countless hours at the center each week for the good of the community and kids. Norm Quinn felt when the locks were changed at the Lighthouse Hall and he was not given a key or told the locks were changed, that he was no longer needed. The message from Dave Patterson, new chair, was received. When this took place, save is hope. He felt the new staff was making him uncomfortable for that, that was taking the fun out. Norm said on one occasion where the president of council actually said to him, "If Hope is not crying now, she will be when I get done with her." Norm has been a volunteering coach for over 15 years.
Can you read that line back again about me making Hope cry, please?
And which place?
No, 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 I'm gonna yield him his time, but I would like him to repeat the line where I was going to make Hope cry.
Norm said on one occasion where the president of council actually said to him, "If Hope is not crying now, she will be when he got done with her." Norm has been a volunteer and coach for over 15 years and a president of Rec for the last five. He loved what he did and the Rec, and the parents and kids loved him and seemed to be satisfied with his running of the Rec Board. He enjoyed serving the community and when Hope had a medical issue and the chair of the Eddie Stone Rec showed an absolute lack of compassion, refused to change a meeting that was scheduled, he decided to resign from Eddie Stone Rec. Norm also noticed that the treatment of Danielle was disturbing. When Danielle ran the Rec Board with Norm and the rest of the Rec Board, it was successful. Financial records were, that were turned into the chair, Dave Patterson, showed that everything was in order. Norm said that he was instructed not to talk to Danielle about Rec business by the new chair during meetings at the Borough Hall. Danielle also was not included in many other meetings or told of any ongoing in Rec by the chair. At this point, Danielle realized she was being frozen out and resigned from the Rec and the third chair. The next piece of this are the parents and kids of the community. They loved these three people. They loved these three people and told them wherever they were to coach, they wanted to follow them. I quote one parent who I spoke to and said, "Norm and Hope Quinn are the most good-hearted and generous people she ever met." President Stewart was aware of everything that was happening, as Hope, Norm, and even Danielle went to him with concerns. Nothing was addressed. So now I say to you, if you want to know what happened, I truly believe they were all fully convinced of resigning, and damage done to Eddie Stone Rec, which many parents are upset about, should be placed on the new Rec. This Rec Ward, I just can't believe, and that's why I went to them. I was on, I played from seventy to seventy-four. I played on the last two years of the boxing team, the last two years of the football team, with your brother. I played basketball, baseball, and everything else. I've heard a lot of things here, and everything was Danielle and everything else. So that's why I went out to them, and asked what happened.
Who was the coach when you played football? Do you remember?
Clyde Dinges.
How many years did he coach?
Many.
Many. Many.
Many.
Many, many, many.
Yes.
There's a lot of volunteers in this borough.
Sure.
Just like Hope and Norm.
Sure.
Who don't get recognized every second.
They weren't made to resign.
They were not made to resign, Bobby, and it's a shame that you were made to read that, because you just look foolish.
Well, that's...
If I ask what's happened, then that's a big old...
Shame, 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 shame.
My first question to you, Councilman, is, are they your words? Did you prepare that letter yourself? Is that your feeling, or was that prepared?
It's the words that they, I asked them a question.
Who's "them" too? I'd like to know who "them" are.
That's both, please sit.
No, I have to leave the room for a second, because I can't stand lying.
So were they, were they your words, or were they prepared for you?
They're either my words.
They're your words, so that's your feeling, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
No, no, no. Not my feeling.
Those words are your beliefs and your feelings.
These are the comments, I talked to them, and this is what they told me.
So those words are your beliefs and your feelings? You believe that everything that you have read on that piece of paper is one-hundred percent true and accurate?
He said this is what he perceived is what they told him.
So do you believe that what you just read is one-hundred percent true and accurate?
Perceived.
Okay, fair enough. I will go to the one line where you've accused me, and Norm has accused me, of wanting to make Hope cry. That is absolutely an untrue statement. An absolute untrue statement, that I have any intention whatsoever of making any volunteer, whether it's Recreation or any other Citizens Committee, want to cry or want to quit the volunteer in this borough. Norm, and I will address you, and I will address you directly. You and I had many conversations.
Yes, we did.
And time after time, I gave you my commitment, and I gave you my confidence that you were going to lead the recreational program. Is that a true statement?
You said it, but it didn't feel it. You did say it, and you did...
Now, what I was told, and this is what I was told, let me make my statement, you can make your statement, and I will yield you the time. What I was told, I had a telephone conversation with Hope Quinn. Hope Quinn told me, "Norm and I are spending a lot of time up at Lighthouse Hall, we're dedicating a lot of time to these programs. Norm's got a second job, he doesn't have the time to put into this anymore, he's starting to get stressed out. As you know, he had a medical episode to worry, he had some chest pains, and it is just not in Norm's best interest, health-wise, for him to continue with the Rec Ward." And that was what I was told, was the reason why you resigned, and I emphasize the word, "you resigned." Nobody forced you out, nobody locked you out. You tendered a letter of resignation saying you've resigned your position from the Rec Ward. Furthermore, and then let me just finish, and I will yield you your time, furthermore, you are the Chair of Recreation, okay? There are nine volunteers that live in this borough that make up our Recreation Board. As the Chairman, it is your responsibility to lead that program. It is not Mr. Patterson's responsibility to lead the program, it is your responsibility. Mr. Patterson's job as liaison for Council is to simply make a determination of what you need support-wise, financially. We earmark two percent of our three-point-four million dollar budget, sixty-eight thousand dollars a year is earmarked for our recreation programs. You certainly have a responsibility as the Chair to say, "Hey, this is the money that I'm spending." But as the leader of the organization, you have a responsibility to lead the program. You have a responsibility to make sure that it's successful. And if there's something that's happening, if you don't like the direction that the board is going, as the leader, you gotta look in the mirror and say, "What am I doing wrong?" And what you did was you quit. And not only did you quit, not only was I provided, not only was I provided false information about the reason why you quit, the same exact time that you quit, you were starting a new organization. So if there's somebody here that feels duped, it was me. I feel duped because of the fact that you were not giving me accurate information. You were not here earlier this evening. However, Councilwoman Thompson and Councilman Dadahu will attest to the fact that we had a gentleman here from the Young Lungs at Play, which was the anti-smoking campaign. What come out of my mouth was that Hope Quinn brought that idea to Borough Council. You were having problems with fans, residents, smoking in the bleachers. Hope said, "This is not a healthy environment for our children." So therefore, what can we do? Initially, we went to Home Depot, bought fifty seventy-five cent, no smoking signs, and hung them on the fence. However, Councilman Patterson found out what we could do with introducing the Young Lungs at Play, which required us to write an ordinance, correct, Solicitor Duffy? We passed the ordinance, we're now in the process of hanging the signs. And I gave the credit, or credit was due, which was Hope Quinn. I will now yield the floor for you to respond.
Well, thank you for the recognition for that. But as you just said, the nine members of a Rec Board was not nine members. People were told to leave, and I know what happened down the line. I'm not going to say it didn't. You don't have nine people. When this one's told on, this one was on the board, and they don't feel any like him, this one was off the board, because they didn't want that one, then we had a couple ladies leave, Danielle was, I feel, was forced off.
Is that why Alice fired too?
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, it happened down the line.
You've been there. We've been...
You were there, and we answered what was going on.
Brad has changed, can you tell me twice why we couldn't get in?
You were our friend, Norm. We got you on air, we were all together, and then something happened.
So when I was addressing that, I just brought it up, that it happened down the line. It happened to other...
Just like a favor.
But they didn't quit.
Okay? But you're saying there's nine. Well, there wasn't. So as it went down, people were coming on, and then we just felt it was time to move, so. And as for the locks?
So you felt it was time to move?
As for the locks, let me speak, it's my time now. It's my time.
Go ahead.
You're saying that we weren't locked out. This gentleman had the locks changed, we had nine members on that board and did not get no keys. Summer camp program was going on for these kids. Ms. Jackie, who ran the thing respectfully, she didn't have a key, your daughter did. Gina, for the Highway Department, he did not have a key. He had to go through Seaver's office to get through. So you're going to sit there and tell me that we, you know, we were all aware of that, and we were going to get keys?
Didn't that happen previously? We didn't have keys.
Now, I'm talking about the summer camp, when the locks were changed.
It happened, Norm. That happens.
It happened when we were there.
Seriously, it happened four or five times.
I'm going to sit here and tell you that you were not locked out. I'll also sit here and tell you that I don't have a key at the Lighthouse Hall, but I don't feel as if it's, you know, I've been locked out of the building.
Well, you have a summer camp program that lasted seven-eight weeks.
The summer camp happened every day.
Let them talk.
Seven-eight weeks went by. I figured I'm going to sit and wait. Well, we never got one.
Sitting wait.
Okay? Your daughter got one, so she opened every day. And I'm not saying anything disrespectful about the Sanders, she's a good person too. She was there, she helped, but we, that's how it went. That's how we felt it went. You guys had the locks changed, Gina didn't even have, he's on your Highway Department, he had to go through the office of Mr. Seavers and then open that lock, you know, unprofessionally, he got through that way, to get the kids in for camp.
Norm, anything else?
No.
Good luck in your election.
Yes, sir, you too.
I'm not running for this.
You gotta do a recreation by election.
You know, that's... I shut Mr. Wilson down, he wanted to speak about that.
You had no reason to run that.
I am sure, I am sure, if this is the reason why this man reg...
You had to run.
Norm, anything else?
Please, sir.
I appreciate it. Hey, Norm, where are the records? Where are the records? Where are the Rec Board records?
They're in briefs, and they were turned in, and the public voted for recreation. Which, by the way, Dave Patterson, that was not his, he didn't say, "I want to stick it to you, give me the records." That's the law, because of everything that had gone on. That's the law.
Councilman Patterson?
All right, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the students that won your words tonight. As far as this whole resignation thing and everything like that, I have a letter here from Danielle Thompson. "Hi, Dave, I spoke to Bill Stewart briefly before the May Council meeting about my possible resignation from the Recreation Board. Please begin to look for a replacement for me on the Recreation Board. You can consider this email, my official resignation from the Recreation Board. Thanks, Danielle Thompson, Councilwoman Eddie Stone Borough." Now, I did ask for records, financial records, I asked for minutes. It's required by law that we have these things. Hope Quinn, who was a great volunteer, as well as Danielle Thompson, Norm Quinn, turned around, the following month, brought in a shoebox filled with receipts, shelved it down the table to me, and I turned around to protect Hope, because she was the treasurer, and I said, "I wouldn't do that if I was you. I would make copies of it, and give me the copies, and you can make yourself copies, and give me the originals, to protect yourself." Okay? I keep hearing that I have all the financial records and things like that. If, if, how can I put this? If Ms. Thompson was a seasoned HR person, as she says, the records wouldn't look the way they do.
First of all, Dave, I'm going to interrupt you there.
Excuse me.
No, no, you're insulting me, so I'm going to interrupt you.
I'm not your happy person.
No, no. First of all, the spreadsheet was handed to you, it was a formatted spreadsheet, it had every receipt, and you called people on that spreadsheet to ensure that the money was spent. So now are you going to sit here and say you didn't have anything? That's a lie.
I'm not saying I didn't have anything. I'm saying what I was handed was a mess.
That's a lie, and I will question anyone's occupation at this point in time.
A mess, okay? It was a mess. And to turn around and, they asked to have Mr. McGinley and Mr. Bennett removed from that Rec Board. They didn't want to do it, but they asked me to do it, okay? So turn around, Mr. Bennett had turned in his resignation before I could even reach him. I did reach out to Mr. McGinley, and he actually thanked me for doing it, because he just didn't have the time to do it. We needed a key for Mr. Seaver's room, that's the room with the member of Bill, okay? We did not have a key to that, so we had a locksmith come in. I was ordered to change the locks throughout, because people had left, and we didn't get the keys back. So just put everything in check, we got the keys, you know, the locks changed, and we got the keys. They did not show up three months in a row, after meeting with me and Councilwoman Gross, trying to sort out things, she went out, she borrowed binders, she did everything to make this work very fairly, very smoothly, and it did not happen.
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
We had contact with Hope and Norm because of an issue that had happened at Lighthouse Hall. We had them come up here, and we've talked, and we're having a conversation. First thing I asked Norm, who was President, because I had just started in January, who was Vice President, who was Secretary and Treasurer? Out of his four options, Norman, Hope, had three. Norm was the President, Hope was Secretary and Treasurer, which surprised me. I gave her the opportunity to pick one. You can't hold two offices in an organization. She said she always wanted to be Secretary, never Treasurer, but it was suggested to her that she keep both, which is fine. At that point in time, we were talking about the kids' records that they had. Norm assured me he had all those records. So I won't know what happened to those records.
Birth certificates?
Yes. I don't know, Norm said he had them, at that table, right there.
Did we get them?
No.
No. And also, I'd like to say that Councilwoman Thompson was the liaison of the Recreation Center, but she was also on the Recreation Board. I explained this several times, and she said it was a political plot to remove her...
It was a political plot, it was removed out of retaliation.
No, no. A political plot was that you were allowed to hold both seats at the same time. That was the political plot.
No. Where is that, where is that written, Dave? Is it in the Borough Code? No, it's not. Is it in the bylaws?
But you resigned, Danielle.
I did resign. Because I wasn't included in any of it.
Why do you want to be president anyway? If it's not okay with you, it's not right.
I'm so tired of...
Dave, let's move on, I think we've made our points on Recreation.
Yeah, thanks for, you know...
We belabored the whole...
Campaign on the taxpayer's side.
And if I got my own personal thing to say, I think that all she does is divide this town with our children.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Councilwoman...
That would be part of our P.O.E., because you divided the town.
Councilwoman Tadashur.
No, not mine.
You divided the town.
Councilwoman Tadashur.
I was retaliated against. I found out who won.
I was retaliated against, just yes, I was.
Councilwoman Tadashur.
And who voted down? The same people who sit up here telling, right?
And that's how people work together. You have differences of opinion, you work together. You don't tell someone what to read on a piece of paper.
I didn't tell them what to read. That's Bob's writing.
Councilwoman Tadashur.
Okay, I would also like to congratulate Leanne Wenzel for getting that honor for Ribby High, or for Ribby School District, that was awesome. Our kids deserve, you know, some credit because they work hard, and that's a wonderful position to be in. I wanted to thank the principal, the kids who work hard. I am excited, because tomorrow we start session two of the tutoring program. What else? It was all good. It was all good. And whatever you had to say, I would love to talk to you, Lynn. And it's a shame, I really, I'm ashamed of you, Bobby, for campaigning at this table, and I don't want to hear another word.
It seems to be that I know.
It's a simple step, Bob.
No, you guys talk, and if it's not what you want to hear...
That's why I've heard...
I've given you your opportunity, I respected the fact that you had multiple pages to read, and I did not interrupt you. I'm yielding now to Councilwoman Thompson.
All right, I'd like to say congratulations to Cynthia Land and Patrick Wise for their essay contest and being the winners. Additionally, I'd like to add that I do concur with everything Bob said. And I was removed due to retaliatory actions, and we have discussed this multiple times ago. It's not the first time that it came up.
You just started that reservation letter that he read.
That wasn't even to me, the liaison, it was to the President of the Board.
That's right. That's right, because you guys were having meetings and not joining meetings, as Beth just said, you and her met with Hope and Norm here in Borough Councils, and Bill was aware of it, because I emailed and texted Bill multiple times about the meetings.
Do you remember what, do you know what it was about? You want me to share what everybody, what he did?
You, you can share everyone.
Councilwoman Gross, that's, we're moving, we're moving on, and I am around to Councilwoman Thompson.
The poor kids are the ones that are...
You're finished?
And this is ridiculous.
Chief Machesk...
Can I just say something? I think this is all ridiculous.
It is.
It's the poor kids, that are one that should benefit, and they're not. I think you as adults should get over this and move on.
Yep.
You want to run, you want to run, go run. But this bickering has to stop, yous aren't children.
Thank you, that's wise.
Don't expect the children. All this sparring's been bickering from day one, since I got on here, with everybody coming against me.
Chief Machesk...
That's how you feel. What about the children? Think of them first.
I work with the children, I work with the children constantly.
Okay, good for you, I'm glad. I respect...
Okay, good for you, I'm glad, I respect that, that's why the bickering has to force them out of Eddie Stone.
Mayor Reeves.
Yes, a couple things, I'd like to congratulate the, to, uh, Joe Jim with the essays. Also, I'd like to congratulate the chief, the, uh, ran in, and, uh, the chief and, uh, Walter Quill ran in the Bulldog Dash. He did finish, Walter Quill, he did finish number one in his age group on Saturday, the Bulldog Dash. It was a nice turnout by everybody. And one other thing too, if you played football with Marty back in the seventies?
I didn't see Marty.
Her brother.
Her brother, oh, George, okay. And that, that football and boxing was not sponsored by Bar and Brack, because Eddie Stone was stopping. I'm done.
Mr. Duncan.
Stop it, sir.
Nothing, sir, Mr. Canyon. Sorry for keeping you up past your bedtime, if you know what that means.
We probably will be starting on the curb work this coming month.
Okay?
Out front.
You'll coordinate with Dallas and, you know, is it gonna require any closures of sidewalks and things of that nature? And I'm sure the contractor will be prepared with barricades to let folks know to cross at the opposite corner and, the duration of the, of the contract? Two months, three months?
Just that month.
Just a month and it'll be done?
Probably, yeah. That'll be all.
So by this time next month?
Should be done.
Should be done.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you for your patience. I, um, I do want to apologize to everyone for the chaotic moments that, that we had at the tail end of this meeting. When I was provided the vote of confidence by everybody at this table to serve in the role of president, it was a honor and a privilege that I did not take lightly. And as president of, of an organization or president of a board, similar to, to a chairman, it's, it's my responsibility to oversee the meeting and to appoint, control the demeanors. I, I do understand the stake that some folks have in the upcoming month. I respect the fact that some people have very strong feelings about certain things that, that happen in this borough. However, I take a lot of pride in the professionalism and the positive things that happen at these meetings. The, the fact that the superintendent of the school was here this evening to talk about things which our school district is excelling at, is things that, you know, we as residents of this community should be very proud of. The fact that we had two fourth graders very eloquently talking about their mothers is something that we should be very proud of. The fact that we have a gentleman coming in from the Clean Air Council to talk about a Young Lungs program is something that we should be very proud of. Getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money for a recycling program is something that we should be very proud of. This table has a responsibility to work together. This table has a responsibility to put our differences aside and do what is in the best interest of this borough. When I was appointed a seat in February of two thousand twelve, the only thing I asked was to have an opportunity that when a vote came to the table, to take a second to reflect on whether this was a positive thing or a negative thing. Is this in the best interest of the borough or is this something that's not gonna benefit our residents? I understand the reasons why tempers sort of flared this evening. What I will ask is that next month, because we do have one more month before the nineteenth of May, that next month, we treat this meeting with the dignity that needs to be shown for this meeting. You campaigned, knock on doors.
Wasn't campaigning, it was all over Facebook. All I've ever heard in every one of the meetings that we had was Karen go off on her and him go off on her. So I, I saw it on Facebook, I saw that the community was still up in arms over it. So I went to the three people and a couple other people and I asked them why.
Councilman David.
And I wrote down why.
I respect, I respect.
It's not, nothing to do with campaigning.
I respect your, I respect your comments.
It's because it was still up in the air and no one understands why.
I respect your comments and I gave you your time.
Well, no, but you're trying to make it act like I'm trying to campaign with something.
I respect your comments and I, and I.
And you get the last word.
All I ask is, is that next month that we put the chaos aside and we conduct this meeting professionally and we do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Eddie Stone. And that is not one individual that's sitting at this table or two individuals that's sitting at this table, it is every individual that has a seat. Now, Council Vice President Reeves was having a little bit of a medical episode, so, you know, please keep her in your prayers this evening that she is okay. But she, I did give her instructions to leave immediately the, the minute that I received the information that she was not feeling well, so please keep her in her prayer, in your prayers. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Your meeting adjourns.